All right, seven oh one, I'm gonna call the meeting for selectmen to order. Selectman Baker will not be joining us this evening unless he's able to join via Zoom, he was called away unexpectedly. So we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, Selectman Norrell, would you like to read this?
The flag of the United States of America and to republic which stands one nation, I've got indivisible liberty of justice.
In the interest of keeping some, just keeping some flows in that, I want to take a couple of things out of order if we could. I'd like to take up agenda item nine D, discussion vote on the FY twenty two twenty three Board of Towne East Windsor Broadway Fire Department budget request. Followed by nine J, a discussion of the Broadway Pond Reconstruction Project to include TBW Director and Town Engineer Len Norton and then return to the column. Oh, I'm sorry, I need to add to it first, one of which is nine J. I'd like to add agenda item nine I, which is a diversity council EMG proposal and agenda item nine J, which is a discussion of the Broadway Pond project to include town engineering. Selectmen or no, we'll move that one. There are second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Now I'd like to take agenda item ninety, followed by nine J. Ninety is the discussion of the Town of East Windsor Broadway Fire Department's budget recommendation. It is a flat budget over last year. Chief, would you like to address the board?
Jason, could I just bother you? This is pegged. Your meeting room is not visible. So I can't tell who's chatting or what you're doing.
All right.
Thank you.
Vic, what's that? Vice Chairman of the Commission for the Broadway Fire Department and Chief Tom, our carry from Broadway Fire Department. So just real quick on the, appreciate you letting us go forward. Quick question though, on the unfinished business, the Broadway Fire Department memorandum of understanding, is that still on the agenda for tonight? Or has that been removed?
Agenda start for no action, I haven't heard that.
Okay. Just checking. Yeah, it's okay. All right. Again, yeah, flat budget from last year. This being the first year that we had the budget in taxation. We're very excited about the services that we provided and what we were able to do with the budget. I'll let the chief talk about the specifics of the budget as it was presented to the commission, but the commission felt that there was no need for an increase and that it was in line with what was expected for operations maintenance as well as the personnel requirements as well as capital improvements.
It makes it a budget didn't go up. We end up, we, all we did was remove some items around line by line because we still don't know our true budget because we have had a four-year budget, which will be our first year. As you can see through this, we've moved some things from here to here there where we were a little fat last year, we're a little thin, it's coming up here. Do they get any questions?
I'm actually looking for a copy of the documents.
Oh, we said, I sent it up. Yeah, we were supposed to be doing these, I sent the whole thing. I'll just take a pause on a couple of copies of this. Unless you have them.
Got one more here.
We'll stand at ease for a moment.
Yeah. All right, gentlemen. Yeah, just real quick on that thing that you just have there from Jason. You'll know on the top it says FY twenty one twenty two and then it says twenty two twenty three proposed. That header didn't carry over to the next pages, but the column, the information is there. They said it's a flat budget, no increase. You know, the commission did a line by line review with the chief and we're very happy with his work and the department's work on it. One thing we have done on the committee, just to report this segment. We had had talks about raising fees from the fire marshal and the commission's consensus was that it's already in the budget, we're not looking to do any anymore increases to taxpayers. The only exception that we're going to look at this year might be repeat offenders or people that are habitually causing things that would be out of the norm for the fire marshal. So that'll be something that we'll have looked at throughout the year.
When you have something, when the commission has something for us to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, it's, we actually just changed everything, service, everyone back, we did a lot of our first net. But Cox, Cox is our service, service of the trucks.
Oh, okay.
So everything. Each of you had to have an iPad that gets service.
Three or four in firehouse itself. I could TV spray for the fire department on Cox.
Signal twelve.
That is our, that's our food for like storms.
Okay.
All day drill, stuff like that. I got the guys that are for winter storm for snowstorm for twenty four hours. We buy groceries so the guys can be down there. Or if there's an all-day drill.
How are you feeling about your fuel line?
Well, that's hard to say. I mean, I brought it up, I think two thousand from last year. It'll be up to thousand and this year it's, who knows what's gonna happen. It's, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be over the issue with it. I don't know what next year. Probably gonna be over. But we'll just take out something else.
And the truck maintenance line is for existing apparatus?
That's all trucks. That's, yeah, it's all the annual PMs, breakdowns, certifications. General maintenance on them. We have four during the day, we have two at night.
Which day?
We do Monday for Friday for the four time during the day and seven days a week for the part time of the night. Different ten, seven at night and daytime is seven, four and eight to five.
There's a fire marshal going down.
Well, we did, we took the, his, the, it was a salary went down. We put a lot of some in my shift, we figured extra amount of hours for the year and the way it's been running, it's been running about a thousand dollars a month for his payroll, thousand, twelve hundred. So if you did the average, I was twelve fifteen thousand, I think we had twenty thousand, twenty five thousand at the payroll. So we just lowered it down and like I said, this is our first, this is really our first year of fire marshal.
Yeah. First you're having to figure that out.
Yeah, so we know.
Anything else, gentlemen, like that?
Any questions to you guys?
So you didn't add, well, you kept the two hundred thousand for the, so you kept that at the two hundred and it's coming in a year from now?
Year from August.
So you'll get one more purchase cycle in there, right?
Should be one more. Six hundred thousand, right?
And what? Not enough for the truck.
No, it's one point one million for the truck. And then it's, we're gonna put, we're gonna put down four hundred and forty nine thousand for the down payment. We're gonna finance the rest or lease the rest.
And the, the whole idea we have with the CIP is to sustain that amount continually so that you have a replacement cycle for the engines as they come up on a five-year cycle.
That's smart. That is smart. Which means with four trucks, you have four, right?
Three.
Three.
Three engines.
So you're replacing, you're replacing, like this one that's coming in in August, the next year will be fifteen years. That's fine.
It's give or take because you have, you have other apparatuses as well that might need to come, you know, but nothing to the tune of the million dollar, yeah.
Well, and there's also gonna be, you know, costable.
Correct.
But at least there's a plan. That's smart.
And it fits in the fire station.
That's that.
No, it's, it's four hundred eighty-eight days out.
She has a bit in the fire.
Oh, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
I'm making them a whole lot bigger now than what they used to. I appreciate.
Bigger and everything else. Keeping it flat and just to piggyback off on what everyone else said, I think it's great that you have a plan going forward and, you know, saving the two hundred thousand in this current cycle and planning ahead is, it's really smart. So thank you.
Anybody have anything to try?
Was there ever, um, any costs shared? With Ralph's point as far as the financial goes, did that ever did?
Yeah, it, I'll say this, we just had this discussion, for example, an iPad, right, to share the use of an iPad between the districts and Broadway Fire Department. It makes sense to say yes. It's nothing to the tune of fifty thousand dollars. It's, it's within the budget, it works really well. It's within O and M costs that are already accounted for anyways and, you know, I would say that the relationship we have with them is good so that they're able to share information with us and we can work on sharing costs. We haven't said no to anything that they've asked and we've been very entertaining, in line with the existing budget to work together towards a common goal for the town.
Right, and I realize, you know, none of these costs are really, with the exception of salary.
Right.
Which is totally separate. You know, none of his other expenses are astronomical. But still, I mean, why, you know?
We just, we just.
Why repeat things if it's not?
Right. We just, we just took a couple of classes through the course and whenever we split the cost with, you know, the district.
Right. Hey, I mean, if that conversation probably opens a whole can of worms into the construct of the district and the commission district. It, it's just the legacy of what we have in the town and we'll make it the best of situations so that everybody enjoys full complement of fire emergency services.
I thank you guys for your cooperation as we've tried to navigate this new structure. It's been, I know it has not been always easy, but you guys have always been easy to work with. So thank you. What else? So can I have a motion to approve the requested budget in nine hundred and fifty seven thousand three hundred and twenty seven dollars?
The move that we approve the requested budget from the Broadway Fire Department in the amount of nine hundred and fifty seven thousand three hundred and twenty seven dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made in second, any discussion?
Well, one more thing, did you guys figure out what that would lead to for mill rate for your taxpayers?
The treasurer said that, or so many sets, I don't know, it's not, I think it's a treasurer, right?
That's. Yeah.
Effective with based on the granite construction, it would be effectively flat. It would still be whatever their mill rate is currently, it would be the same thing. The granite's growth, the granite's in Broadway was almost dead.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, anything else? All in favor?
I am.
Opposed? Thank you, it's unanimous for in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I'd like to move on to nine J, the added agenda item to include the director of public works and town engineer. Mr. Norton.
Yo.
How are you, sir?
Living the dream.
I hope you guys know he has that happy step every day.
Or just have some up-to-date photos or a little situation. Morning and this afternoon. I guess.
I think you were all here last night.
We were, we're, we're part of it.
Huh?
I think Marie is part of your.
Oh, yeah, you, you did come in later. Okay, so. So we have a problem, the top cap. And if you look, if you look at the, actually the photo that just passed out, you will see the second, the second photo, which is looking west. You can see that the, this, this is where it fell down for the cap stayed in place. You can see where the hole is, where it's left over. You can see that, yeah. So what we've done, and we're progressing really well because if you had seen this yesterday versus today, as you can see, the entire chain link fences down. All of the guide rails are ripped up. We've got the Jersey barriers of not blocking off for a work zone. And you can see, we, we are trying to detour people around, but people don't always listen. So we have the arrows in the center of the newly created lanes to try and keep people on their own side of the road because we narrowed them to probably ten-foot lanes. And if you look at the, the fence came out rather easily because it wasn't routed into the stone, it was just stuck in the holes in the stone. So if you look at the, the third picture in, those were, the, the next group we're taking this afternoon, you can see that the entire remaining row of cap has been removed at this point. And then you will see, actually the first one, if you look at the third photo, you can see, if you look closely, you can see in the water, you can see like blocks, concrete blocks in the water and it could flip over. You can see, I tried to show you the process of what they're doing, dropping a block in, 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 in the pond. So what they're doing is they're, they're, they're putting a roll blocks in the pond a short distance away from the wall. They're going every eighteen feet, they're going to put another block on top of that roll of blocks and then they're going to build the staging off of that for the workers to work on. They can put plank on it and work on it because they have to drill dowels into the existing wall and form up for concrete and what have you. So those will, that will start tomorrow, putting the second row of blocks on and they'll start excavating out the existing sidewalk in the area of blacktop there where the, where the guide rails were. On Monday, they will start forming, drilling and forming, getting ready for the concrete. We are hoping that this will be done in like three weeks. We, we don't want this to go on forever. I, I kinda have permission from deep to lower the pond a couple of feet. So we're, we're going to start doing that tomorrow very slowly. Bringing it down a couple of feet so that the water level gets to, what we're trying to accomplish is the water level just below the top of that row of blocks that's underwater. We just want to get it down that far. We're not looking to, you know, create a catastrophe or get anybody in fisheries mad at us. And then we have to fix a, a section of, it doesn't show on here, but there's a section of sidewalk at the end, since we're fixing all that sidewalk. There's a section of, well, replacing all that sidewalk. There's a section of sidewalk right at Main Street. Maybe thirty feet, it's like the tubus, it's not concrete. So I, I'm, tomorrow I'll be making an application to DOT for an encroachment permit, about twelve feet is of what we have to do is inside the state right away. So I want to put a real handicap ramp there with the detectors and all that stuff. But I need to get a permit to do that. So I think they'll be, they've really been really good to work with. I'm working with a gentleman when we had a little drainage issue down near Main Street. They didn't actually even make me get a permit. We stayed out of it right away. We didn't do their loops and they ended up with the camera. We, we bought the camera and they did all the wiring and installed it for us. So we don't need loop detectors there anymore for the signal.
Not putting a fence back up.
But yes, what we will be doing, once the concrete is poured, we'll be drilling in new fence posts, putting a new chain link fence up. It's gonna be black vinyl coated like the, what we did when we redid the dam. We'll run that the length of the pond on top of the wall and then we're gonna be putting a new, the, the guide doesn't show in these photos, it shows in the earlier ones. The guide rail there was the two cable wooden posts. Well, now we're gonna put in what's called the Merritt Parkway guide rail. It's actually a steel reinforced wood guide rail, so it's gonna look nice there in the center of town. Going up depot street, you got the opera house on one side, you got Merlot up the street. We'll have a nice new sidewalk, nice new black fence and then nice guide rail going up the street. So we want to, you know, we have to replace it anyhow. It's, it's only a few dollars more to, to do it. Well, you have to put a box and you can't put the normal metal beam rail there because someone will be walking on the sidewalk, they'll catch themselves on, you know, bolts or something. So so that's the plan. The initial estimate was a half a million dollars. We've modified the design a little bit. We're hoping we modified the design a little bit. We will know better on Mon, tomorrow actually and Monday when they start excavating. We may be able to save as much as a hundred thousand dollars with the new design. I don't want overkill, but I want to do it right. I, I don't want to be doing this again. So whatever, whatever needs to be done, we're going to do it. So.
So what is that? So it's all gonna be concrete now?
There'll be a, let's see. Concrete sidewalk. I can show you exactly what's gonna be. There's gonna be a, I'll show you all at the same time. This is the existing wall here. This red is where the existing wall is, okay? The cap was on top of this, so we're coming down onto that. We're gonna excavate out into here and probably down a little below here. This is gonna be filled in with processed. These, this is dowels or rebar that's gonna be drilled into this wall, it's gonna be formed up. So there's gonna be a concrete cap on top of here and it's gonna be integrated with the walk, it's gonna be six foot, six inches from here over to a, a point, probably approximately where it used to be. And then we're gonna put in new, new paving and then new guideposts. So it'll be a, and that's six inches. So it's gonna be about a six foot wide sidewalk. But the fence will be stuck in about six inches or so. So it's gonna be, we're doing a lane sidewalk slide too. Want to stay?
And so if you have to do that, three, one.
Well, as I said last night, three. That, that would take probably eighteen to twenty-four months to get a permit from deep to do that upon. So, you know, we, we need to fix this now. I get it, we do.
I agree.
I understand it would be neat, but I'm not sure it would still be that safe though, but so that's where we are.
So I want to start by thanking you, Len, for, for your incredible responsiveness on this. The problem was pointed out to us on Monday morning and Len had a solution in place in my office by Monday morning. This, this was a very, a job very well done. So thank you for taking this seriously.
Well, thank you.
Last night, the board of fire is approving that appropriation to fund the costs of this. We need to do the same and, and forward it to town meeting. So the dollar amount is four hundred and ninety seven thousand eighty seven dollars and fifty cents. And again, as Len said, that is likely a highball estimate, but that's what we need to, to get rolling. Yeah, I'll take that.
Me too. I won't get any of this.
So I have a million dollars.
Just. I'll make that one.
So the motion is to approve an, an appropriation in the amount of half a million dollars and forward to a town meeting for the repair of the Broadway Pond retaining wall. Any further discussion?
And associated expense. Because you're gonna have a sense of the sidewalk.
I think that's in the quote.
Yeah, but it's not in the motion.
Fair enough. I'll forward back the quote as presented.
In our motion, do we also need to set the date for the?
I'll, I'll do it at our next selection thing, so it'll be April seventh. Any further discussion, any further comments? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Just to put out there, I went out there the following morning to check to get it and you guys were already out there. Already had the bargain down. But they were very pleasant. Make sure that everything's safe in the area. Somebody is guiding traffic and hopefully we're shutting up. I had turned around and I wanted to come back, but one of their trucks was feeling loaded with stuff.
Yep.
I just patiently set it and then apologized for the three minutes. I said, for real?
This is the fourth project we use them on. They are basically now my preferred contractor for these types of projects. I mean, they were the little bidder on the dam. They, they were the emergency repair on South Water Street because they were one of only two companies that had done that before, that the company that supplied the snap tight pipe were comfortable with. The other one was in Maine and never responded to me. They fixed the culvert under Main Street by the old Sweeney gas station where, where the chestnut brick goes under. They mortared that all up nice and tight. So these guys, they, they hop to, they come out. They're doing a, a double box culvert in, in Granby right now. I was talking to their director this morning and, you know, I was asking him how, what kind of luck he was having. He said, man, these guys got in and got out. I mean, they're gonna be out like early and they're doing a bridge in South Windsor over by Main Street or something. So they're, they're, they're pretty well known and they've been around apparently since nineteen fifty nine, I learned. It's a family company and as, as the gentleman told me this morning, we've not had one claim since nineteen fifty nine. So I guess we know what we're doing. So we're happy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So now I think we are, we are returning the normal call of the agenda. We will take up for a special budget, special meeting budget workshop meeting minutes from March third, twenty twenty two. If you're in your packet, everybody should have had enough to review those. Any changes or corrections?
I know, I was flipping through, I was waiting here.
Oh, I wasn't the only one.
No, you haven't too.
By the time I got to the third page, I said, am I losing my mind?
I know.
And then I'm saying, did everybody not get the rest of it and then it went in order?
Yeah.
Make a motion, pick up the March first, twenty twenty two special work, workshop meeting minutes that presented.
Any further corrections? All in favor? Opposed? Regular meeting minutes from March third, twenty twenty two.
Want to approve the regular meeting minutes from March third, twenty twenty two?
There are seconds. Made in second, any discussion, any corrections? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? So public participations, one of the public's two opportunities to address the board. Are there any members of the public here present?
Yes.
Who would like to address the board?
Tom Lassner, twenty seven, we're circle. Mine was more of a question. I know that now that we paid down some of the debt, which would give us the ability to borrow up to ten million. I was wondering what the process is going to be to look at some of those projects that are so expensive that we haven't been able to afford them. Like the school roof and things like that. What's the next step for that?
So the next step for that, to, to answer the question is, I'm gonna have a presentation on capital projects and, and debt positioning for the board of selectmen with the intention being April seventeenth. There's a couple of variables that will mess that up a bit. After it's presented to the board of selectmen and they've had an opportunity to opine, I'll share that also with our finance.
Great.
And then we'll have a, a plan moving forward. But there have been staff level conversations happening around that with what the, the current urgent needs are. There, there are some. And then there's also some long-term planning opportunities that we can capitalize on.
Perfect.
So it is in work, it, it's actually in a draft on my laptop right now.
Okay.
But it's not ready for prime time. I would be embarrassed to share this.
Thanks.
Are there any, any members of the? Um, are there any any members of the public joining us virtually who would like to address the board of select? If so, please unmute yourself, give your name and your address and state your business. Okay, there will be another opportunity later in the meeting for the public to address the board. Next up, we're gonna move to communications. Um, the first is an update from EverSource, um, on their tree trimming plans for the calendar year. Um, this is not indicative of any particular timeframe within twenty twenty-two. But, uh, they did want us to share this information and let the general public know that there would be maintenance happening at the areas indicated on the map. Um, so if you see an EverSource truck out there or an Aspen truck out there, um, that is likely what they're doing. Um, and that that work will be ongoing throughout the calendar year. Um, six B. Um, so. At our last meeting, um, board members had asked me for the Board of Education's budget. Um, I talked to Dr. Tudren and he provided this overview of expenditures by cost center, it doesn't do a a wide item. Detail, but that information is included in the budget message. That he submitted to the town clerk, um, and if it's not on the town website, it will be shortly. Um, so at the time that we put the agenda together, this was what I had, and I I actually was wondering if this was sufficient to what our interests were. Um, but if you wanna deeper dive, uh, he put together a very thorough presentation that's available on. Um, speaking of budget, I included a copy of the budget message that I put forward, uh, as was required by charter on. Due two days ago, but I submitted it last week, um, it addresses each of the points that are specifically outlined in charter that are to be included in the budget message. Um, it has been, it's out there, um, so I mean, it incorporates. The changes that were made at the board of selectmen level, so as we approved the budget two weeks ago, those, that information is reflected in here. There already are are a couple of things that are since outdated, um, and the reason for that is because. The Board of Assessment Appeals has met and made changes, so the grand list has actually gone up. Instead of being a a grand list number of four point oh eight percent, that's actually gonna be a four point two percent number. That's largely driven by the revocation of the tax agreement, uh, between Town of East Windsor and R M eighteen holdings. Um, so. That's, of course, one as I thought, uh, meritorious to include in the packet, so you guys had a copy of it. And we're gonna talk a little bit about that, a little bit more about that. Um, next. Little reappointments. Cause there's nothing further on that, we have a reappointment. Um, of Albert Grant as a member of the Conservation Commission, um, for a regular member term expiring April first, twenty twenty-six.
As regular member for a term expiring equal first point twenty-six to the Conservation Commission.
Made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Moving on now to, um, agenda item nine A, um, so the, as you folks will recall. Um, this board has been doing some research into the process that we would have to undertake, uh, to execute eminent domain pertaining to the N M C T casino site. Um, I do have a legal opinion from the town attorney, um, that is attorney client privileged, so I will not be, uh, discussing that in open session. But he will be joining us in executive session later this evening with the intention to talk about the eminent domain process you would have to undertake. For the N M C T site. So that will be during executive session, you could hold any comments or questions you have until then, I wanna protect the attorney client privilege. Um, nine B, um, so we need to, uh, name some additional negotiations needs. Um, so we have pension negotiations still to commence with the Supervisors Union and with the Public Works Union. Um, and we have a labor negotiation that we need to impale, that's actually nice, so we'll do that second. Um, with, just by way of background, both the Supervisors and Public Works. Um, their current labor contracts were negotiated off the record, um, which means they were done pretty quickly and with, uh, only a little bit of. Work entailed from the part of of committee members, Charlie, I think you said on the P P W one, that was very vast.
Yeah.
The, um, supervisors have indicated an intention or an interest in doing off the record negotiations for the amendments to their pension plan. Um, so based on the composition of the team we have to formulate, um, I think that. Is certainly something that would be possible. So I'd like to to name somebody to serve. As a pension negotiator for both of those arguments, and it's rather than doing an all heart system, I'd just like somebody to, for some consistency. Um, so is there anybody who would like to serve on that? You don't have to, I'm I'm there, so I can do it, it's an opportunity, we're not required to have another selectman. Alan is on the pension board, so he would be on on that anyway.
Right. That was my thought, and I did it last time, so.
Pension.
I'll take it if they don't want it, I just didn't wanna.
And I understand that, and and. Cause I'm not working as part of that anymore, like I was when I did. Um, so. Uh, the the. Um, so I'd like a motion to appoint the following people to be pension negotiation team for town. Uh, first selectman Jason Bowser, pension chairman Alan Baker, deputy first selecting Marie De Souza. Word finance member Bill Sign, finance director Amy O'Toole, and town attorney Josh Hawkslads, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Um, next, we will have, um, we have received a demand to negotiate from the police union. Um, those negotiations are likely to commence sometime in either, uh, April or May. I find it unlikely that it will be resolved by the time they're out of contract, but it could happen. Um, those are formal negotiations with the the full formal process, uh, they typically will take. A bit longer than these off the record ones, is there anyone who would like to serve on that, um, negotiation? I will say Alan has expressed an interest in doing that. He did the last one.
Okay, yeah, oh, that's great. I believe I have the time.
Who's not here, anybody wanna volunteer?
You sure he wants it? Make a motion to appoint Ellen Baker, um, to the. Uh, making the patient panel for the police union negotiations.
Now, second then. Um, just as a a point of clarity, that that team would consist of, um. First selectman Jason Bowser, selectman Alan Baker. Word of finance chairman, uh, Geraldine Corso, town attorney Josh Hawkslads. So can I have a motion to appoint those folks?
I'm sure, I will move to appoint, uh, first selectman Jason Bowser, selectman Alan Baker. Word of finance chairman Geraldine Corso and, um, attorney Josh Hawkslads. To the labor negotiation panel for police union negotiations. Oh, and one member of the police commission to be determined.
Made in second, uh, for discussion, well, all in favor? Opposed? Alright, panels are 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 in panel, thank you very much.
Are they on time?
Yes.
And the others are on time too, right?
So the the, no, the pension ones are not on time, that has been a a mess to clean up from, quite honestly, from the last administration. Um, and. Those are the last two outstanding bargaining units that still need to have the pension document updated. That process process has been going on since January of twenty seventeen. It's been a very long. No.
I thought the police, this last time, is the last one.
No, those are labor contracts, okay, the pension, the pension was a whole different animal, the the pension document, the core document for all municipal employees had to be renegotiated. With each individual bargaining, it started off. In in twenty sixteen, I think. Um, trying to do what's called coalition bargaining, which is we try to get all bargaining units to negotiate the court plan doc together. Um, and there were a couple of bargaining units with members now no longer with the town who, uh. Absolutely refused to do that, which caused us to have to negotiate, not only get through that and and go through an M P P hearing with that, but. Actually, um, negotiate with each bargaining unit on the on the same core document separately. And that includes all municipal, uh, bargaining units and, or a non non certified bargaining. Um, so that process was. Very difficult. These are the last two that are still outstanding. And then everybody will be current on the last update to the core document. When these negotiations happen, you negotiate the court plan document. And then each appropriate appendix, so every bargaining has their own appendix to the core document, which is really where the. The differences are in terms of pension benefits. Um, so. The appendix negotiations are are much less difficult than. Making sure something like eleven unions are all in the same danger, protect, honestly, with a particular function which in the last case. So, that's it. Okay, um, next Wednesday, uh, I need to present our budget to the board of finance. You guys all saw the presentation that I gave to you at the start of our budget process. I'm gonna largely adapt that, there's already some things I wanna take out, some things I wanna put in, obviously incorporate the changes that were made during our budget. Are there particular things you want me to highlight?
Um, are you planning on, um, doing something with the reporting secretaries as to how we came to the determination we did?
Um, I will make a note of that, but that is, that's one of the changes, um, there've been some changes in, actually, I've got an additional information around, um. Changes in milroads, that's really actually kind of enlightening, um, there are some some small changes, but that's a good note to make sure that I. I did make note of that in my, um. Any other points?
But, yeah, there's nothing, um, there, I'm sure there'll be some questions that'll arise.
I'll have to check the ordinance on that as as to whether or not I'm carrying that or the commission themselves are, I think the commission does. It's not in general, but no. So it's not part of our budget recognition. I'll I'll review the ordinance.
And I think you might wanna, um, find out all the change in the staff and the all.
Alright, if you guys have any other feedback, I'll be working on that at the beginning of the week, um, so, actually, or the weekend. Um, certainly, beginning of the week. With the intention of having that ready to go by the end of the day on Tuesday or Wednesday night. Um, last time we talked about, um. How we were gonna, what our strategy was going to be around dispersion of the Arco funds, um, and we talked about doing a community survey. Um, so I met with. A lot of town staff and Marie joined us as well, um, to, uh, kind of. Think about all of the long-term projects that that we know that we need from a staff level, from a C I P perspective, from. Um, you know, some of the master planning work that's being done, and we categorized all of those projects into. Um, clusters, if you will, like clusters of buzzword that I like to use, and, um, so communities of interest amongst those projects, so what the survey. Is asking people to do, um, is to, um, rank. How important they, from a, on a scale, how important. Uh, things like hard infrastructure investment, quality of life projects, private community investment, tourism, um, hazard pay and. Environmental quality projects are. Um, once we, and I I listed examples of what each of those. Those communities of interest entail, so once we get the results back. And we see, you know, if there is one of those that is a clear outlier versus the others. Um, we can take a deeper dive into some of those projects that have been identified at the staff level for consideration by the board. Especially considering things like pricing, feasibility, you know, long-term sustainability. Um, so this is a draft, Marie already gave me a note a about the, um, ranking system, and I think the way I wanna do that, I think I'm just gonna take the numeric code out. Um, and just leave the the verbal code, so. So, rather than having a a one, two, three, four, five, it would just, the categories for response would be not at all important, somewhat unimportant, neutral, somewhat important and very important. Um, what we'll do is, uh, we've already created a draft of a Google form survey. Which we can, uh, circulate on website and through social media that only allows one email address to respond one time. The other thing we're gonna do is, once we have the, uh, once I have sign off from you folks, I'll do, um, a community-wide. Hard copy mailing to every household in town. With a copy of this and we'll actually receive back, um, hard copies by a date certain. Um, we'll take those hard copies and and we'll do a C S V export of the Google form. Um, so we have the data from the online portal, and then we'll be able to actually manually enter. The hard copy responses, I'll have Jennifer in my office, uh, put that together, so that we'll have an aggregate. Um, survey that that incorporates all folks who are, um. More internet savvy and and those folks who may not be, so we got a hopefully a good cross-section of the, um, of the community. Couple of things that I do think we we need to, uh, include. In terms of the response solicitations, name, address, and age range. Um, that will tell us, that will be very telling, um, and I I'm including age range in there because as you saw in the budget presentation I did a few weeks ago. Uh, we actually know where the age breakdown demographically of our constituents is. Um, so we can actually wait the the responses based on the age respondents compared to the your overall, uh, demographics in the community. I really wanna include the name and the address for the simple reason I don't want people to have more than that. Um, so, by doing that, by collecting the data online and hard copying, doing C S V export, we can make sure that there is one respondent. Um, one person is one response and and not any more than that.
Just a suggestion, Jay, if you're gonna have these asterisk, is it gonna be a notation where it don't say mandatory? Also, it would be ignored. Because if you don't say it's mandatory.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so this will be, um, poured out into a bit more of a letter, this is just a a draft that I wanted to to get developed. But, um, the asterisk on the web form, you cannot, you can't submit it until those are done, and it flags it as this field is mandatory, so. Um, but that is something to make sure we do in the electronic one. Um, I'd like, I'd like to do a thirty-day window on this, um. So thirty days from whenever I think I'm able to get it out, which would be. My guess is this would be in the field by the end of March with with a closeout date by the end of April. That's a a rough estimate, if I can do it even faster than that, well, I don't think it'll take us longer than that to get that together. But you never know what comes up, so I'd like to do it for thirty days, which gives us a couple meetings to circulate and try and encourage people to participate.
Also, I'm sorry. So the at-home copies? How will they be returned?
So, we'll we'll ask for them to be mailed back to my office. The opportunity is there.
What about offering the drop box set?
I could ask the worker. We can use the, the ballot Dropbox.
You can ask him. But you could use the parking red box.
All right. What about the introductory? Is that enough? I, I, I'm I'm trying to get some balance between explaining of why we're asking people for their opinion on, on the use of the funds and not pouring them to tears by putting in federal records. When I first read it, it wasn't, and then I read it twice, and I was like, okay, yes. Yeah, but you know about it. It's short. So actually, can I use you as an example, sir?
Sure.
Are you familiar with what we're doing with Arpa?
Yes.
Ruth, are you familiar with what we're doing with Arpa?
A little bit, guy.
A little bit, good. Does, does this explain enough for you what we're trying to do? The town of East Windsor is listening to community feedback for how best to spend approximately 2.1 million in federal American rest of plan funds. Under the federal law, the town has until the end of 2024 to commit the funding, and until the end of 26 to spend the funding. Please answer the following questions. Did I explain enough about?
Yes, that's very simple.
All right.
If you try to over explain it.
So I could write a two-page introduction and nobody's ever gone with you. No.
I have, I have, that's what I would seem to like. Well, maybe you should explain that it can only be used on certain things, but then I'm like, why?
Well, so here's the thing, that under the final rule, that's changed. Oh, so in the interim final rule, there were those five categories that, that, yeah, were initially there. The, and we're going to do this on April 7th, but the, the final rule allows for effectively, well, for any, any news pounding who's receiving less than $10 million to make a one-time declaration that they're going to use it for an unrestricted purpose. It's basically, if you think about it from a tax perspective, it's the standard deduction for the funding. The exceptions to that, and why I didn't want to go into granular detail with this, but now that you got me going. The exceptions that you cannot use it to pay down pension obligations. Other than that, it's unrestricted. And that's why when I got the staff together and tried to figure out, you know, what's the next plan for this? That's why we came up with these clusters of groupings, so that we were trying to touch or provide an opportunity to touch some different bases. But yeah, that's the, really the only, oh, there's one other material change in the final rule that is very good. If, if, under the final rule, if any projects or any funding had been assigned under the interim final rule guidelines that were that were moved forward with the, the intention of the law but didn't follow the law, it was forgiven. So.
Shame on us for doing it the first time.
Well, if we hadn't done it right the first time, which we did, but if we hadn't done it right the first time, that language would have gotten us out of any type of, of federal obligation. So not only did we do it right the first time, but we also had coverage from the feds in case something had gone haywire. I love that. That was very relaxing.
Yeah.
I wonder what town of Washington, too.
Well, it's not West Haven. Okay, so that's that. Okay, what are we on? 9G.
G.
Okay, discussion of the Windbrook Homes Developers Agreements. We've talked about that a couple of times.
Would it be possible to ask Attorney Hawkslab for an explanation of the red line changes?
I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure he would be happy to provide that. I, I know he's out of state right now, so. Josh, is that something we could get for our next meeting? A copy of the, an explanation of the red lines?
Sure. Yeah, happy to do that.
Thank you very much. All right, so then in, in order to postpone that would be in order.
Move that we postpone discussion of Windbrook Home Developers Agreement until we get clarification from Attorney Hawkslab.
I'll second that.
Made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we'll get that as soon as we have some, some follow-up information. Appreciate the opportunity. We're on to 9I, Diversity Council EMG Proposal. So the. Oh, tax refund. What about H?
I'll move to accept the tax from the fund in the amount of $430.57.
Okay.
Made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Okay.
Now we're on to I. So the Diversity Council received a grant for the Greater Hartford Greater Together, the Greater Together Foundation. Great.
Don't want to ask me. I screwed up.
The Greater Together Group that was the beneficiary of the funding from the Greater Hartford Foundation. They received a grant to provide diversity and inclusion workshops in the community. They now have a contract because we're the fiduciary for them, and then there's a contract. They can't execute this without the board's authorization and my signature. So I set this around this afternoon. I, I just got it yesterday. And rather than have them wait until April 7th, I wanted to, to try and move it if we could. Are there particular questions on the spoken word?
We have that in our bag.
I had it in your bag.
I know where it's from. Especially getting on my phone, but I was looking up the, with the name, but the name was just, just at the Hartford Foundation, right? But it didn't.
Yeah, so they want to have community conversations around diversity and inclusion, which fits in specifically well to their mission. They have the funding for it. There's a, a contract with a reputable vendor who's willing to do it. But we do hold the funding, so we need to, well, if, if it's the board's pleasure, I need an authorization to sign it. That's.
I think we already agreed that. We would do that.
We agree we would hold the funding, but I need actual permission to sign the contract.
Make a motion to authorize the first weapon, Jason Bowser, to sign the contract with the Diversity Council and EMG Executive Money Group.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Any discussion?
Have they set a date for this?
I don't think they have. Okay. If they have, I haven't heard about it.
Okay.
Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, let's keep that. Thank you. So we're now on to selectmen's reports. What I would like to do is, I would like to take out of order public participation and then do executive session and then come back to selection reports, and that's, that's for Josh's benefit, just. Join us. So public participation, is there anybody here in the room who would like to address the board of selectmen? We're good.
I will. Ruth Ann Lancer, 27 moral circles. I just want to say thank you for everything that you guys do. And I would just highly recommend to anybody in this town who doesn't show up in this room or on the Zoom meetings, they're really missing out on a lot. For the short time we've been in East Windsor, I know more about this town than any town that I ever lived in. You know, it, it's, it's very, it's transparent, very eye-opening, and you know, you just, they get all the answers to their questions and they wouldn't have to go on Facebook to ask them.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Lancer. Is there anybody joining the call remotely who would like to address the board of selectmen? All right, I'd like to ask for a motion to go into executive session to include Town Attorney Josh Hawkslats.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're in executive session at 8:02 PM. It is 9:07. We're out of executive session. We have selectmen's reports to go. I'm going to recommend that the selectmen submit their reports electronically to the reporting secretary. And then with that thought in mind, I don't believe there's any further business to come before the board. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 9:07 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned at 9:07 PM.